Good evening, everyone. Sorry for being a few minutes late. We were all just chit-chatting. No other reason. I'd like to convene into open session the regular meeting of the Fairview District 72 Board of Education. It is December 15th, 2021, and 7:04. We have already established that we have a quorum. And I would just like to remind everyone to silence their cellphones and then join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Great. So at this point in our meeting, we are going to adjourn to a public hearing, to conduct a public hearing concerning the intent of the Board of Education to sell $10 million in working cash fund bonds for the purpose of increasing the working cash fund. Can I have a motion and a second to adjourn to the public hearing?
So move.
All second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Okay. We are now in a public hearing. So if you're taking over from here?
I'd be happy to. Thank you. If this is the time, if members of the public would like to comment on the board's intention to issue $10 million in working cash to fund the facility project that was previously approved, we would ask members of the public to please come up to the podium and feel free to share your comments. We're only taking comments on this topic at this time.
Okay. I am not seeing any members of the public wishing to make a public comment at this time concerning this issue. If there is definitely no public comment to be made, then we will reconvene to our regular meeting. All right. So we are reconvening to our regular meeting. Our first item this evening is to approve the minutes of the regular unclosed session meetings of November 17th, 2021. Can I have a motion and a second to approve?
So move.
All second. Are there any changes or corrections to the meeting minutes? In that case, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. The minutes are approved. Next is to approve the payment of the bills in the amount of, sorry, $665,861 and one penny. Can I have a motion and a second?
So move.
Second. Are there any questions regarding the payment of the bills? No. In that case, could the secretary please call the roll call vote?
Yes, Ms. Fuzdi.
Yes.
Ms. Diakakis.
Yes.
I vote yes. Ms. Downing.
Yes.
Ms. Linoy.
Yes.
Mr. Gugliotta.
Yes.
And Ms. Brown.
Yes. Bills are paid. Our next item is PTA report. Do we have any member of the PTA to make a report this evening? Oh, great.
Good evening. I'm Steve Ladenas, one of the PTA co-presidents. In the last month, we had our fourth benefit night at Portillo's in Skokie, and we really appreciate all the families who are participating this year because a portion of the proceeds go to the PTA. We also had our spiritware sale recently, and some of the items were delivered today or will be delivered tomorrow. Unfortunately, some of the items will come in January because of the pandemic. There's a backorder, and those families were notified about that delay. Then we had room parents and guardians who helped prepare fun games and activities for the K through four classrooms for this Friday's classroom parties, which will be, we deliver everything by today so that the teachers have enough time to prepare because they will have to conduct the activities on their own. We have our next general PTA meeting on Wednesday, January 12th of next year at 6:30, and we're going to continue to hold our meetings via Zoom. And then finally, we just wanted to thank all the students, parents, fairview staff, community members who have helped make all of our events of this 2021 school year so far a success. We couldn't have done it without everybody's participation and help. Thank you very much.
This is? It is. I like it. I like it. Okay, school activity report. Does the board or administrators have any good news to share from the district?
I, oh. Got lots of good news. I just wanted to say I had the opportunity to attend the two orchestra and the band concerts over the last two weeks. So I wanted to congratulate Mr. Connor and Ms. Messino on a wonderful job. It was amazing to see the kids play the songs, everything. It was wonderful. And then I also wanted to thank the staff and the administrators who made these events possible and allowed everybody to come together. It was a great community event. I think, you know, there were lots of people at both band and orchestra, and everybody, it was done safely, and it was just really great. So everybody pitched in. So thank you to everyone. Really appreciated those events. They were wonderful.
Great, great. Nora?
I was gonna say what Aaron said. I only saw the band one, but it was, Mr. Lapaca said it felt like a reunion, like, wow, we could be in school. And even being in the gym, it didn't feel weird as a parent, as a middle school parent who had never seen a concert here. That's kind of the only thing I know. So it was great. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I'll just add that it took a lot of creativity on our band and orchestra directors' parts, as well as Mike and Colleen in trying to figure out how to do a concert in the gym. We had never done that before, how to do it in this space safely. And so, you know, I really tip my hat to them for being really creative and making it happen for our students. So thanks, everybody, for all your hard work.
I'd like to add that Fairview participated in a math competition and took first, second, and third place at Regina High School. So kudos to Ms. Curry and all the math teachers.
Well done.
And on that same note, we had our fourth and fifth grade spinout students participate in what's called the REIT Math Competition, and it's a global competition online. So Fairview, actually, we made it to the final four out of over 100 schools globally. And so our fourth and fifth grade students today played a team in South Korea. So just an amazing opportunity that our teachers are providing for our kids, and they finish in the top four. So the competition is now over as of this week, but they, yeah, such a huge accomplishment for them.
I just want to mention that everyone stole my good news. So thank you, thank you, board. Math competition and orchestra. So that was great that everyone chimed in on that because it really was a feel-good, couple of opportunities to move in that direction, to know that it's still possible. And shout out to Mr. Connor and Ms. Messino and also all the students because some of them have not performed in front of a large audience in their time in the music department here. So it was exciting for me. I was kind of just giddy at the moment to see all that, and that's why we love being here and doing all those things. So thank you to everybody. And our girls' basketball team finished this week. Our JV, which is our seventh grade team, unfortunately lost in a championship game, but played really hard on Monday to Old Orchard Junior High. So they got second place. And our varsity, they finished in third place. So really successful basketball seasons. And boys' basketball will start after winter break. So really exciting.
So I just have a little bit of news. I have been working with the Skokie Library and also District 68 to develop a collaborative event for our middle school students in March. So that is upcoming, and the details are really developing well. And so you all can expect to hear more about that and what that's going to look like in March. The event will take place at the library. So our hope is to just kind of, you know, introduce our families to the library, give them a tour, and things of that nature. So more details to come.
Is there more?
I don't know. Our bill paying this session was on point. So good job to our business office. Thank you. I decided I might have to say something. I'm dumb done.
You just had to add some, did you?
Added value.
Well, including bill paying, what I noticed about all that news that we heard is we heard about sports, and we heard about the arts, and we heard about the academics with the mass. It just shows you, we're darn good at everything, aren't we? I mean, seriously, this is just so much success right now in every aspect of this school. And I'm so pleased that, you know, whatever our kids' talents are, they can find success here too, which is great. I love it. The only thing I was going to mention, which is a complete sort of come down after all that's, well, not come down, but I just wanted to say thank you to Jackie and Sargon for coming with me to the IASB Conference downtown in November. I hope your first experience of the conference wasn't too overwhelming or scary or underwhelming. I don't know. But it was great to have them along and to get that better perspective of, you know, just how Fairview fits in with all the other hundreds and hundreds of school districts that we have in this state. I think it changes your perspective to speak to some of these districts and hear what they're dealing with. And it just broadens your knowledge altogether. So thank you for coming with me.
Thank you.
So, moving along. Administrative reports. We have, first on my list is a report regarding Arcon and Quinn, the facility plan.
Yeah. I'd like to, Patrick, can you help board members get the presentation up while we do the first part of this? Thank you. So we heard feedback from all of you that it was hard to focus on a speaker here and a screen behind you. So the presentation from Arcon will be on your computer in front of you. So you don't have to be kind of going between two places. So Patrick will help you get that up. If you don't have it, please just raise your hand and he will come over and help you. But I'd like to start by introducing Mr. Jack Hayes from Frederick Quinn, the construction management company. Jack is the president and CEO at Frederick Quinn, and we've had a really good time getting to know him over the last couple of weeks since the board approved working with Frederick Quinn. Jack has done projects at Skokie School District 73 and 1/2, which is one of our neighboring school districts, the Skokie Park District, as well as Kimmelworth School District 38, among many others. But those are the ones that, you know, I think really relate and connect to, you know, the size of our district as well as being in Skokie. So I'm very pleased to introduce him to all of you tonight. And Jack, if you want to say a few words, welcome.
Thank you. I appreciate being here tonight, and I appreciate the confidence the district has placed in Frederick Quinn Corporation to be your construction manager for this exciting project. I'm happy to answer your questions if you have any for me, but really just an opportunity to introduce myself tonight, say hello. We make a practice out of being present and available to boards throughout the course of the project so that we can keep you updated on the status of things. We don't want to be a stranger. We don't want to be here tonight, and at the end of the project, we'd like to be visible and accessible to you throughout the entire process because it's a significant investment in your community, and we want to be available to you. So thanks for giving me the opportunity to say hello tonight.
Hello to you too. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Mr. George Demarcus and Mr. Jeff Buck from Arcon. They have some really fun things to share this evening as we're starting to get a look at what the exterior of the building might look like this evening. You know, we'll listen to the presentation, but this is a really great opportunity for the board to weigh in on how you feel about the looks, any ideas you have. This is a great time to share. And certainly, any questions, both gentlemen are more than capable to answer those questions. So George, you want to take it away?
First of all, I'm cheering when you had. You know, the first time I got the result, I was behind in hurting being in the van and white doing the slides. Now you guys get to do it yourselves. But here again tonight, thanks, as you've gotten used to seeing me and Jeff here. Every month, we come here with new news and progress, and our goal today is really to focus on the exterior. We're going to kind of walk through the floor plans and the site plan in generality, and then kind of dive deep into how things are looking. But what we haven't been doing over the past month, we've been continuing to refine the floor plans and refine the both additions and interior renovation work with feedback we've been getting from staff. But one of the important things that we've been doing was we circled back to the students last week, and we wanted to touch base with them really to show them, here's what we heard from them many, many months ago, and here's where things are going, and kind of show them what the plans looking like, but also get a deeper understanding on the outside areas of the playground or the play space that was actually living at the south side of the site, the blacktop area by the gymnasium, as well as the blacktop area that's kind of adjacent to the existing park off of Laramie. And saying, as we build these additions and that area is shifting over in a different area of the site, what do we want that to be? We wanted to understand where are things going from an exterior perspective, from a play perspective, and make sure we're not just coming back and giving you exactly what you had, but really look at, do a deep dive and think, where should things be going? What are opportunities they'd like to have on the outside in the green space, in the blacktop space? And really, it was great, and they were very vocal. And when they came to the table, as we spent, it was probably an hour or so with them, a little over an hour, they really were excited about telling us different types of climbing exercises they like to do, things they want to be doing out there with their friends. That wasn't just, I want to play basketball. And I want to just kind of run around a blacktop. There was Gaga pits, things that they can, towers, they can interact, mazes, different type of interactivity that they'd like to see out there. So that guy, his churning, and we've been working at how we can develop that space in the exterior. But if we go to the next slide, this is a little more of a kind of an overview of exactly what we've been going over the last month. So as you see on the south end is the addition that was the pre-K through K, along with that front multipurpose space in the, at the entrance of Laramie. Sorry, I apologize. The other piece that hasn't changed much is the other addition of Laramie where the old library was, where we have the new entrance, the third and fourth grade classrooms that are kind of flanking, extended beyond along Laramie, and then the new library space that's essentially located off the front lobby. In the back and the site, we've been working with our civil engineer of kind of crafting a good parking size parking lot that expands your existing parking by at least 20 or 30 spots, as well as creating a nice roundabout that would be good for drop-off for bus traffic, and using that zone to be able to close off to be an additional play space for students. So now, as we've shifted our gears from the south, that was where the addition is, and pulling all those blacktop spaces to the opposite end, we are now developing this area where the drop-off is and where the play spaces by the running track would be to see where that, how that develops. That's kind of our next stage. But really, when seeing the site plan, we wanted to show you, get acclimated to where the additions are because the next slide, they're going to be showing you images from the east off of Laramie, the south by the playground, and then different three-dimensional views that get you closer and closer to the building and show how these additions are really complementing the existing building. If we were to switch to the next slide, that's again showing you a more zoomed-in version of the two additions and the interior renovation work. And the fourth slide is getting that second story. This is that link that we are doing where the additional classrooms are. They're bringing down, surrounding the new library and connecting our, to the existing first grade wing. But Jeff is going to walk you through all the extra elevations, and I'm turning it over to you, Jeff.
Okay. So good evening, everyone. As we get into these elevations and these renderings, keep in mind the one thing that we were directed or given suggestions pretty strongly from you as a district is whatever we do should be contextual with what you currently have. So as we think about how we would put these additions together with your existing buildings, and I say buildings because you've had multiple additions, the idea was to take the aesthetic of the 2000 edition that is on facing Laramie, extend that to the south, wrap it along the south property line next to the tennis courts, and connect to the gym, which was also part of that 2000 edition. So essentially, any visitors to, or people passing by the building are going to get a sense, hopefully, that the additions were all put on at the same time. That's a cohesive context here. So here, this first elevation is something that we are required to provide to the village. It gives them a sense exactly of that, whether or not we're being contextual. And as we've talked a little bit before, everything to the right of the cursor, my cursor, is the existing 2000 edition. Everything to the left is the new proposed edition. You're never going to see it from this view. This is standing about a mile down the road to the east, with lots of trees and lots of houses at the wing. But we put this together so that the village can really get a sense that the new addition, the two-story classroom piece here, as we move south, the multipurpose space, those things that you'll see driving up and down Laramie are going to fit very nicely with the existing. You're also probably not going to be able to see this, this south elevation as clearly as this because of the sled hill, because of the trees, because of the tennis courts, all of that. But essentially, we're carrying that same aesthetic, that architectural feel, look and feel around the south end. And then on the left side there, it does wrap up and join or come next to the 2000 edition gymnasium. So essentially, three quarters of your building wrapping around are going to look pretty much like they were built at the same time. This is if you're on Laramie, just outside of the main entrance, looking south toward the multipurpose. We've done everything from material similarities to the height of mullions and the type of control joints and where those are spaced. That's all going to be very, very similar and taken, borrowed from your existing 2000 edition. Little bit closer towards your main entry. That's your existing main entry with the concrete wall that separates the steps from your current ramp. Everything to the left of that concrete wall is the new addition. This is down close to the playgrounds, south on Laramie, looking back to the north. So what we've done since the last time we talked with you is we've taken that multipurpose space. We've made the shape a more regular rectangle, get some efficiencies there. Yet at the opposite end of that, we tried to add back in some of the same language that you have on the north end on the 2000 edition. That, the idea that was present back when that was designed, that the wing comes and has a tilt up to it. We tried to incorporate that on the multipurpose space.
Can I ask a question about the multipurpose room?
Of course.
What is the actual height of inside then? Is it equivalent to a two-story or is it closer to two-story like this room we're in?
We've lowered it. It's not this high. It's, the ceiling height is probably right around 14 feet. So it's about a story and a half. We had it at one point at two stories, and it just felt like it was too cavernous. These are little ones mostly, but if you were to use it for a school board meeting, we think a story and a half, 14-feet kind of ceiling is appropriate for a big space. But if you go up to 22, 23 feet, it gets to be just wasted space, too tall. By lowering it, you know, Jack will weigh it at some point, but by lowering it, we hope we've taken some dollars out of it as well.
I just wondered just about the acoustics of it, though, if it was a building that, I mean, for example, this room, if it's sort of similar in size to this room?
Close, probably close.
The height?
The height's going to be lower, not quite as high. This is a pretty high ceiling. The acoustic ceiling tile that we would use is different than this. The acoustics in an auditorium are designed to absorb in certain areas and then bounce sound back in certain areas. What we try to do in a multipurpose space like this is treat it like a conference room that you might have gone to at some of those spaces at the conference, where it's got a lay-in acoustical ceiling tile designed to absorb sound.
Okay.
The walls, we would typically put some sort of sound panels around to absorb sounds. We don't want it to sound and be as tinny as you might find in a gymnasium. Again, we're conscious of the fact that most of the time, it's going to be little ones in there, and their voices are much more higher pitched than you would have on stage here. So we wanted to count for that and try and knock as much of that sound down as we can. Having a story and a half does help us get some of that sound out and bouncing as opposed to coming right down on you. You know, this way, you could have a group of musicians in there, and it wouldn't be a problem because you're not having the sound bounce up against the wall or ceiling so high, but at the same time, it absorbs. So we're going to be paying pretty close attention to that.
Okay, thank you.
I also have a question. Are you able to use the same product as the 2000, or is it like a close match? Is there any issue with code or?
Exterior-wise?
Yes.
Certainly, the cream color material, that's what I would call a Stucco. It's probably, there's a number of different brands out there drive it. Ethis is a type of material. Will match that. It's a nice cost savings over a brick cavity wall. The brick is going to be very, very similar to what you currently have. One of the things we're finding from the brick reps is that the brick that is on the existing 2000 edition is no longer made. So we got to find something that's really, really close. So they're working on that. So the goal is to try and have it feel like it was built at the same time. Okay. So this is, we talked last time a little bit about having some steps between the drop-off for preschool, pre-K, and this courtyard between your existing wing, where your second graders are and third graders, and the new entrance for drop-off for pre-K around here, where you would come into this wing, providing a bit of a courtyard right there. It's a transition between the hustle and bustle of the street and all of the traffic out there. As a parent, I park my car, I walk my student up there, and I cross the threshold, essentially, of safety. It's by having a couple of steps there, I'm not as worried about it being an open plaza where a car could go or other things. There's certainly a barrier mentally. If you talk to the little ones and say, okay, we're not going to go by the steps, or everybody has to stay back behind the steps. A couple of other things that we've done with the multipurpose room, we've put glass along the bottom of the wall facing the street. That allows you to queue up the students in there when it's time for their parents to pick them up. And you can see a parent getting out of the car, coming up, and you can bring their student out to them. There's a lot of advantage to that. And obviously, if you use it for other purposes, such as a board meeting, then you would have lines that would close that off if you wanted to. Okay. This is just a little bit of a bird's eye view to give you an idea what that courtyard might look like back in here. So if I were to drop off my student, I'd bring them up these two steps and come around. What I don't think we've got a real good view of anywhere is that right behind this wall, there are a couple of tiered concrete steps or benches so that you could actually have students out there in a small group or a class size, use it as an outdoor learning opportunity. I'm sure.
Is that, go back one. So like, if you go kind of in the middle of the slide to the right, there's sort of a gray differentiation. Is go up a little bit? Is that a atrium-ish? Keep going up?
Oh, back in here?
Up a little bit more. That.
That right there is the courtyard that is back by, very close to the existing big gym. It's the courtyard.
Oh.
That's an existing courtyard that you can see from there.
Oh.
Behind the first grade classroom.
It's the one with the curved serpentine kind of wall in it. Your existing building is essentially everything that's gray back here. This wall, all the way up to this point right here, this line, that's where we are. This wall all the way up to this point right here, this line, that's where we are budding up against the existing building there to there. With the, with the new, this happens to be a, a team room, a good-sized team room. And then our classrooms start right here and go off to the right. This south addition butts up against the existing building right back here where my cursor is. And is all of this roof that's taller than that. One of the reasons you'll see the new addition having taller roofs, even though it's a single-story piece, is because of the interstitial space between the ceilings and the roof. We're making those higher so that you can do some things mechanically and electrically and get your systems in and out of there in a way that's uh, not as limiting as, as the current ceiling heights are in the building that was built sixty, seventy years ago, uh additions.
So will there be like two main entrances, like early elementary and then middle and upper?
So, uh, do you want me to answer that?
Sure, absolutely.
Um, so we would imagine having a very similar entrance pattern as we do currently. Um, with the preschool, uh, we would stagger the start of the preschool to be after the arrival of middle school and K4. So we don't have those parents sort of converging all at the same time. Because preschool parents are gonna need to park their car and walk their child up most likely. Um, so that creates a whole different traffic pattern and dynamic. Um, so with that being said, if preschool is staggered and has different sessions, et cetera, um, we would still want to use that entrance for our kindergarten students and possibly our first graders would be then um located in that part of the building. So um, I don't know if I would call it two entrances, but certainly that would be the, the preschool entrance, but we would also use it to bring other grades in.
We've been able to separate them further than what you currently have. Your, your main entry is right where my cursor is here. And that other entry, what you use currently uh for getting students in is right about here. So we've moved that further to the south now to right back in here. So spreading those cars out a little bit.
So sorry, there would also be a third entrance in the back for all the students that are bussed. Cause currently they're dropped off in the front along with everybody else or?
You know, we're, we're still in conversation about the drop-off and pickup. Um, you know, as the parking lot design has evolved, we have built it so that it can accommodate bus traffic or car traffic. So it'll be very flexible. Um, we have moved buses into the back of the building due to the pandemic and needing to space students out. That's worked pretty well, but the principals and I have not had a conversation about how that would look. We're just trying to, to build the facility so that it has a lot of flexibility and we could do it whichever way we, we felt was best.
I have another question if you don't mind. Um, one of the issues that I've, you know, my kids have had and I think other kids have had uh when drop-off during, like when it's raining or snowing, is they would have to wait outside and sometimes they would go inside. But I wondered in your plan, have you considered an option for kids? What would they do if it was raining outside? Is there a covered spot or is that, is there a different way to get in now because of the rain?
Just, just to explain what we do currently that works very well for us is we do have an indoor lineup, we call it. Um, our staff supervise students within the hallways near their classrooms for the most part. Um, so on those days where it's pouring, kids are, are very cold. Uh, we just bring them right into the building and they go to specific locations. Um, that multipurpose room will give us tremendous flexibility with that. Um, cause now we'll have a larger space where we can bring at least kindergarten, first, maybe second grade inside and kind of keep them in that one space rather than having them staging in hallways. Um, so we also have added some awnings um over the years um that are kind of a lifesaver when you're in that in-between. You know, it's kind of starting to rain, but it's not pouring yet. Um, so we would want to consider, you know, some sort of awning type of structure at some of those entrances. So definitely things that we are thinking about, but until the plans really um firm up, we don't wanna spend too much time trying to work out the arrival and the dismissal and staging. Um, until we really know, you know, which classes are gonna be located where, uh, et cetera, et cetera.
There's a, there's a couple other, just some nice benefits of how we've looked at circulation throughout the benefit to that point. Not only is this multipurpose space a place where you could uh stage a number of grades, but you also have some widened lobbies outside of that and then also outside over here, outside of the library, um with some seating and bench and type things. So where you currently are using a lot of your hallways, we've given you some more that in areas that they're pretty strategic in support of that. Um, but they're really designed to supports overflow from larger event-type spaces like multipurpose space in the library.
I have a couple questions about, or not a couple, but um, how, or maybe staff can tell me. Like two questions are, how were kids chosen to be kind of part of a panel and what grade levels did you get?
So originally, last year when we started the process, we had fourth through eighth graders. Um, and I don't remember Mike, how, how, and Colleen, how that process kind of evolved. You could speak to that. This year, um, when we regrouped, you know, of course, our eighth graders had moved on to high school. So the group was fifth through eighth graders, um, but the same kids were invited to, to come back and be a part of that conversation. I think Mike's about to chime in here.
I believe that, I sound really loud. I believe the teachers got some interest from students that were in person and remote last year when it happened. And I think that student council also was a part of it and looking at volunteers from student council. Um, just as leaders that were selected to be a part of that group, to be a part of that process too. So then, like Dr. Whittaker said, we had those students come back um and have a conversation with our con.
And, and our con did hold in-person as well as remote sessions because we wanted all of those students to have an opportunity who were interested.
The remotes.
Yeah.
The remote sessions. The remote sessions were a lot of fun because their technology, their, their savviness about the technology is so further advanced than mine. They were grabbing images from the internet and, and showing them as their backdrops behind them and uh showing us, oh, you know, if we had a library that did this, it was a lot of fun. We had some really, really good input from them. Um, one of the things we definitely tried to do with this multipurpose space is give you the opportunity to have a visual connection with the playground. Um, and eventually you'll, you'll see some interior renderings that are looking out, but uh we're fairly early on, so you're just seeing the exterior looking in. But this is as if we're standing in the middle of the playgrounds looking back. And you can see that we've tried to put a lot of glass on that south side, uh, give you an opportunity to, to look out and see some trees and also do some supervision as well. Um, so it's a, it's a space that we hope is gonna be feeling very comfortable and, and uh, an interesting space, so.
Could I just ask you a quick question about that, that image? So I guess first I wanna just say the my profile, I immediately noticed the swoop up on the roof of the multipurpose space. And I think that was a, a really sharp addition and really kind of a neat way to tie the old uh to the new. So, so.
We listened to your superintendent on that one. She had a very, uh, very good idea there.
Uh, so, so I, I think that was wonderful. What, what's the, so the multipurpose space is closer to the park than sort of the rest of that wing of classrooms? What, 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 what's that offset from that? How, how far back does it go to get to the classrooms?
Let me go back to the site plan here.
And while he's going back to that, I'll mention, there's some very blurry lines between Park District property and Fairview property. So part of the um Park District playground equipment is actually on our property. Um, and we're in, we've had several meetings with Park District already and, and we'll work that all out. Um, but you know, where some equipment is located currently, it may need to be moved to another position within the park. Um, the tennis courts, there's some, you know, blurriness of those lines as well. So we're trying to really work collaboratively with the Park District. They've been great. Um, and to try to sort out some of those issues that have arisen, um, you know, now that we're digging a little deeper, but sorry for.
No, you're fine. Uh, it's a really good, uh, really good way of wording it. This is the line that she's talking about, the property line. And you can see your track sort of extends a little bit over of that, over that property line to the south. This box is the north edge of the tennis courts. So you can see that the tennis courts, which are really out in this area, extend over the property line onto your property to the north of the property line. As does the playground, which really comes way out in here and then extends in this area up north of the property line. We know that during the construction process, there's gonna be some of this playground that needs to be dedicated toward moving vehicles and, and things. So uh, the idea and the conversations that you're having with the Park District is, you know, if, if we lose an area like this, how can, you know, can we, do we have the uh, the green space that we can replace it uh south of where it currently is? And they've been very, uh, you know, very good conversations with them. Um, so to answer your question today, it's very close. When it's all done, you're gonna have, uh, from the tennis courts, we're about we're about 25 feet from the tennis courts to where the south wall is. And we'll be at least that far off with the playground. It's, depending on how we do paths and, and ability to get to the playground, there'll, there'll be some, some uh pavement out there. You're gonna have a number of uh doors coming out of these classrooms. You see those little boxes? Those are doors exiting from the classrooms uh as a second means of exit. Uh, it's a code requirement. Once you get above a thousand square feet, you need to have a second exit out of a, a classroom. The benefit for you and, and your teachers shared with us that they really like the idea of, of taking students out there, taking them over to the playground for a mental, physical break, coming back in that door without having to go all the way through the building. So you've got opportunities to connect from those preschool and kindergarten classrooms to that playground area pretty, pretty directly.
So, so, sorry for the, so, so that's the, from the Park District to the building. So then when you?
No, from the tenant, from the tennis court, the north end of the tennis court to the building is about twenty, 25 feet from the Park District property.
Multipurpose space, the, the multipurpose space sort of juts out to the left in your diagram.
Yeah, it's about eight feet. We're about eight feet from there. Um, and we're working with that. I think in the end it's probably gonna be closer to about six feet off of the south end. Um, but we're gonna work that playground so that it, it, you know, you're not running right into the wall when you're playing.
Thank you.
Sure, sure. Uh, let's go see if I have, I think that was almost our last slide. One other one, this is the north side of that multipurpose room, looking back to the south. Uh, you can see that we've got windows so that you can see all the way through it. And then that's the door just immediately to the right of it where you would enter if you were dropped off for preschool. And that's everything we have.
I have a question. Will you be able to give us updates on the green space or is that gonna come from the, is that going to come from the SCOKI Park Commission? What specifically about the green space?
Any changes to the ba-, you know, the basketball, which is the, the track or the park? Is that, is that, is that gonna be?
That'll be from, from all of us. Sure. Um, you know, our, we're still working out with the Park District. Um, you know, the, the playground equipment component.
Right.
Um, it's not our intention to touch the tennis courts.
Right.
Um, we've already talked about um potentially closing the tennis courts um during certain hours of the day, only to reopen then later in the day when construction is um more uh minimal. Um, but those are all discussions we're having. The track, um, it would appear that there's gonna be damage done to the track because of equipment and whatnot. Um, our intention would be to repair the track. Um, you know, I, I don't know enough at this moment as to, you know, whether that would be, you know, adding any width to the track or, you know, there may be some nuances there that we talk about as we get along, but. Um, and then the green spaces um that are created because of the um uh, the, the uh new parking lot, you know, those are the things that they were talking with the kids about. You know, do you want basketball hoops? Do you want things to climb on? Do you just want benches to sit and talk and chill? Um, you know, so the kids' discussion will guide us a lot on that. Um, but we'll continue to update you as we get a little further along in the process.
And, and their response would be all of the above, right? They, uh, they very much like the idea of continuing to have hardscape for things like the Gaga pits and the basketball, but they, they really, uh, as you talk to most middle schoolers and we've done this a lot, they really miss the opportunity to climb on things like they did when they were little. They're looking for that age-appropriate climbing type of thing. So as we develop this green area out here, we're going to also have the conversation with you and talk to you about how we're developing these other courtyards. And uh, we're looking at this not as an alley, uh, you know, it's a place where you don't bring kids. An alley between the kindergarten wing and the existing gym. But instead, we're looking at as, how can we turn this into an opportunity for teachers to bring students outside for learning opportunities? So that is, that right now is in the, let's put post-it notes on the wall phase. We will be, as we get that into more sketches and ideas that are more concrete, we're gonna um be talking with the administration and talking with you and looking at opportunities to take whatever we come up with back in here and seeing how those might apply to other existing courtyards in the building. Uh, this one that's right down here and how this space might become more activated. We do have um an interesting opportunity with the courtyard right off of the library. This space that's green right here is an outdoor space. If you come in your main entry and you walk past those stairs and go straight west to the, what we call the T in the circulation, there's this, there's existing glass right along that corridor that you can look out to the left. And you look out and you see the, the library sitting out here. But we wanna keep that existing glass right there, but have an outdoor space that you can access from the library. And it's a space that's got enough amenities out there such that I can take a book. And as a teacher or librarian, I don't have to worry about that student wandering off or being in an unsafe situation. And that student can feel safe, but it's an opportunity to get outside, get some sunshine with a book. So we hear that a lot from students about how it would be really nice to do that. We've put that in a number of different schools. Um, so we're gonna, we, we think we've got an opportunity to do something like that as well here. We are, uh, we have started some conversations with our landscape architect. Uh, in fact, uh, they're coming out tomorrow to sort of walk through this courtyard and some of the other things. And we're gonna begin those conversations now with them. Any other questions about?
I was just going to make a comment that um I really like um the whole view of the front of the building. I was very mindful of the fact that, I mean, I think our building's beautiful right now and the fact that the new addition uh to the south um emulates what we already have. Um, just aesthetically, it just blends so well. Um, we have to be mindful of our neighbors. We're a very sort of small, tight neighborhood. So um, having something that blends well with what is already there, I think I, I wouldn't mind living across from that. That's, that's the way you have to think about it.
Correct.
Would you mind living opposite this building? And my answer is no, so I think it's great.
Well, things that we always think about in the back of our mind is that any time we do a major addition like this or a new building, is that that addition or that building needs to evolve based on the needs of the inside. And how that inside starts to direct the massing and the adjacencies and the circulation flows. If you could get all of that to work, you can, you can make a beautiful building. It helps when you've got a really nice blueprint to start from with an existing aesthetic or existing uh look and feel that a community is comfortable with. If that is something that we can continue and make it feel like it's very contextual and you've got a, a circulation plan and a setup uh spaces that are really, really supporting what you're trying to do as a district, then, then you're gonna have a great building.
Great, thank you.
Well, thank you for your time.
Yes, thank you very much for coming this evening. You've become, coming quite regularly.
We love that.
You've certainly known your way here now, I'm sure.
And this is the exciting part.
We appreciate all the regular updates. Thank you very much.
No problem. And you're really excited too because this is, we went from, we always had the fat head approach, the thirty thousand feet up in the air approach. And now we're starting to get to those reality pieces, right? Uh, I know last time we were looking at the plans and we said, all right, when we come next, next month, we'll be showing you exterior. Well, now, a month from now, we'll be circling back to you and start showing you the interior. That's my target. We're developing the library. We have a library meeting tomorrow. So you'll start seeing a lot more of those 3D images, but with all the details inside. So uh, we'll be able to get it there and uh, we're gonna keep going. This was, we're happy to see that you guys are liking the exterior because after today, we are looking to submit for the appearance commission through the village SCOKI. Keep that process moving along. Our several engineers working on the site. So this is the next step. So we appreciate it. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you very much. Pretty appreciate it. Okay.
Okay, next on my list, I have superintendent's report. I will just hit some highlights for all of you. I'm sure you've taken a look at it in your board packet already. There was a lot of time spent on COVID-related items over the last month. We are continuing with our shield testing. However, the third-party vendor that we have worked with up until this point was changed. Last week, the first week with the new vendor, so it was a little bit. We're assuming that tomorrow is going to go much more smoothly. We also held a clinic on Monday from 10 to 11:30. About 60 students received their second dose of the COVID vaccine. So that was, I think, very helpful to the families who chose to take advantage of that opportunity. And we are seeing an uptick in COVID and hospital students and staff numbers. We believe, you know, we're very typical. This is what we're seeing all across the area and across the country. So, you know, we continue to keep mitigation strategies in place. And we think that our systems are strong. You know, I think everyone's getting a little fatigued with all of the mitigations and the masking and whatnot. But we, we think it's very important to continue to keep students in school and to keep them safe. I want to touch upon the, the equity audit that you offered the report last month. Since that time, we have convened a district equity leadership team. Very happy to share that Ms. Phil Patrick has joined their team. She's a wonderful addition to that group. And we shared the full presentation with that group and talked about our next steps, scheduled our next meetings. And one of our first goals of that group will be to develop an equity statement for the district, which we will bring to the board for your review and your approval in the coming months. And really just looking forward to our work together in that group. A lot of meetings related to construction and facilities, some of which are really exciting and interesting to be a part of, which are low voltage electricity, probably not my favorite topic at this point. But, you know, we need to have lighting and projectors and all that good stuff. So we're looking forward to having a lot of behind the scenes that it takes to get to the point of these presentations at the board level. We worked with the union for the past several months to continue contract negotiations, which was an excellent project, very collaborative. We have a great union executive committee to work with. We have appreciated all their cooperation and hard work over the past couple of years. Many school districts, their members of understanding written for us everything related to COVID and COVID related matter. I'm very proud that we are always able to seem to agree upon things without needing to go through all the legal issues. So I think equity leadership. And then finally, Cassie and his team, I think a very, you know, good list of projects for winter break. We are building to teaching staff so that those staff members can get into the rooms. We want to do the cleaning. There are other regular maintenance projects that go on throughout the winter break. The administrative staff, you know, we work through winter break. So, you know, we'll be in the building and supporting Cassie with whatever he needs. But I do appreciate his attention to detail of those regular maintenance items. Because that, that provided, I think it's part of what really keeps this building running very efficiently and, and well. So, so those are the benefits. I'm happy to answer any questions that board members might have, something I passed over that you want to know more about or questions they might have.
I just noticed you had this ribbon cut in with a chamber of commerce. What was that?
Oh, yes. So I'm a board member, an executive board member, a Skokie changer of commerce and industry. Just to add that, the business community is very important. That's why we have a thriving business community. You know, our, our revenues and desirability of living in this area really depend on the vibrant village and village services. All depend on, you know, our taxes as to our schools. So part of your being a board member, you are required to attend ribbon classes. And this one is actually really interesting. It's something I've never seen before. But now, we have a spa where we can actually go to a tub of water that's 40% salt. So you can kind of float and it's supposed to be very relaxing. So it's kind of an exciting addition to Skokie. I don't know, I haven't been to the spa today. It looks pretty relaxing. So that's just part of our relationship with the board, when a business owner works with us. We try to support them and, you know, get to know who they are, love them, the community. Many of them that live in the business community are active in Skokie and their children are in their schools, et cetera. So, yes, that is.
I'm guessing this is all the time of year with everybody being so stressed. They probably have people lining up. I think they seem like very nice people. I would say, good for them. Any other questions about the report? Okay, great. So now we are into board committees and representatives. And the first one I have on my list here is Finance and Personnel Committee. That, I'm sorry. You did not meet, I think. There was a meeting that I was able to make it. Things were pretty quiet in the hundreds. So, yeah, resolutions was the meeting I attended last month in November. And there were 400 delegates there, so that's about half of the school districts and state representatives. This is especially the big election, which I'm sure you're guessing. It meant it took a long time. There were a lot of teams involved. There were a lot of people saying, I can't log on, I can't find it. Although, kudos to the high end, because there was 411 people in one room, all linking to the same wifi and it worked fine. So to run through, I gave this to see if you can actually sort of review it and exactly what was voted for when. But to run through the important things, the first one, which is requesting that teachers complete a reading instruction. That was debated and where I put their call to question. That is a thing where it is debated and people are actually making their points. And at any point, somebody can come to the microphone and say, I wish to call to question, which is a great discussion. That's what we're owed to end the discussion. And if it succeeds in ending the debate, then it goes straight to the law. So just to explain what means by call to question. The second one is significant, which is concerning the items that come up several years in the past about allowing school staff to be authorized to carry concealed weapons. As I say, it's come up many, many times. And on this occasion, the resolution committee had actually recommended to adopt it on the basis that it was purely a district choice, but if you wanted to do it, you could do it. But if you don't want to do it, you don't. That also went into prior meeting and was eventually called to question. It was still voted down, no, but the thing to note on that is it was only 20 something votes different, whereas prior to that, I have my previous notes. And in the last one, the difference was 15. So it's. It's a concern, but so board member compensation, sorry. Chartered reimbursement, although, no, the board, we discussed that and we wanted to vote yes for that. I voted yes for that. It did not succeed. So there will be no movement on this IASB, IASB to look forward to establishing chartered reimbursement as part of new policy. The others.
The others were pretty much as you expect.
I want to, it's a couple of numbers, number 11 and number 12. Not in particular, that was, we discussed and we didn't vote yes on that one. But we didn't agree that she'd agree. But yes, yes. That actually didn't come up in the discussion at all. There was no appeal by us, so it didn't come up for vote. So that was moved. And then pretty much everything else went according to plan. Where it had been recommended, it was also then the vote in its favor and it was adopted. And the same for the existing positions and the application of the existing donation. These things add amendments to this one. So most of this was determined, okay, we can say. Then with mentioning again, that this is purely a decision by the board's representation for the IASB to pursue this legislatively. It's not meaning that this is going to go into law tomorrow. It's just for them to actually have it as one of their positions that they then pursue legislatively. So that's where we learned, digest the report in your own time. So, MDSE next?
Yeah. Yeah. First, just want to thank you for putting all this together and having everything so clear and all your service and edred and IASB. Because it really, you do a really good job of making it make sense to our district and us. So just appreciate that. I think it's easy to not tell from the January. But construction is underway for the renovations. And January 27th is the strategic planning day. And they are writing any supermen or board members of their member districts to attend the strategic planning. So anybody who's interested in spending some time inputting ideas into the DSE, let them know. Otherwise, I would plan to attend. There's strategic research for the next few years. Angie?
Thank you.
Thank you for that. That's appreciated.
That's really important. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Diane, the board committee meeting. He was here, the last meeting was an executive meeting and there was more discussion on next year's parties like coming. And maybe this year's winter gathering party, if you'd like. We were bringing out a couple options and more to come on that. We're doing some research to see what best fit the situation with COVID and what we can do for the kids and the families.
Sure, great. Thank you. So, minimum of information I can report, there was requests received in this last month, which was, no, this is one, two. There were two requests received in this last month and they were handled according to the required law. Information I can.
There was one that came in since their last meeting. Teacher Sarah Lee, who's present since the first night.
Wonderful. Some heavy baby blankets. Okay, before we have a public comment, I'd like to invite members of the audience to address for, to state their names. And we will set the three-minute timer.
Good evening. My name is Gretchen White and I parent free parent students. I'm also one of the members of the new PTA DEI family. Thank you to Ms. Downey and Mr. Shover, several administrators and teachers who are attending our. Excuse me, pick off whether or not we look forward to partnering with the school to host more community meeting events. I would also like to thank the district for investing time and money into the equity audit. I attended the last board meeting where Dr. DBL presented the summary of the findings. The results confirm a group of parents have been requested for the past two years. Now that the school has a report, it is time for the challenging but important work to continue. It was mentioned that there will be a presentation, school meeting in January about the findings. It's important to allow time during that presentation for community members to ask questions. Also, in the spirit of transparency, once it's finalized, our request to the report be posted on the website for those interested to review. Districts have also worked with Dr. DBL and they have their report under equity tab of their website. Excuse me, I've touched on the group. Two of the recommendations mentioned in Dr. DBL's presentation were to inform both student and community equity advisory meetings. Given that equity work continues to belong to all of us, I think that it is wonderful to form those students this school year. That way, they can play a part in shaping the district's equity planning like students, alumni and parents themselves are involved in crafting the strategic plan. Above all, the evidence invested in our money into the audit is imperative that the board supports the staff as they engage in this work. This work is not easy and will cause discomfort, but with the order of the activity that the staff knows, the board supports their efforts and will hold them accountable for action. One suggestion that's made by the board is to create its own equity statement and policy. This would go along the way to showing the staff that you are committed to this work. I feel confident that the time and the right professional development, our amazing, fair, and staff and community can move us forward toward creating a more equitable school, which will benefit all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Palmer and I'm a parent. Gloria Jane Watkins was born in the year 1952. She attended a public school because the school was terrible back then. And she's held in school, grew up to be an educator and activist, who go to the penny email books. And tonight, I just want to leave you a few quotes from her book contract. She is not the most famous in this book, so she won't be watching, but I think these are supposed to speak to us during thinking about equity and what we're called to do. In teaching to transgress, she writes, "The classroom, with all its limitations, remains impatient of possibility. In that field of possibility, we have the opportunity to live for freedom, to demand ourselves and our comments, an openness of our heart that allows us to face reality, even as we collect the energy used to move beyond these, to transgress. This is education as a practice of freedom." In a book called Teaching Community, a Path to Code, she writes, "To build community requires vigilant awareness of the work we must continually do to undermine all the socialization that leads us to decay in ways that perpetuate domination." And then she says in her book, "My hope emerges from those places of struggle where our witness individuals positively transform their life's role around them. Educating is a vocation rooted in hopelessness. As teachers, we need that learning is possible and nothing can keep an older mind from seeking after knowledge." And finally, I want to read a quote from Embracing Freedom. Here, that one uses a sort of playful metaphor and dancing to describe the organization. She writes, "One of the things that we must do as teachers is twirl around and around and find out what works in the situation that we are in. Our models might not work. And that twirling change is a critical element."
Thank you for your comment. Is there any other comments for the board? And I'll just note that there are no online public comments received. Okay, so now we finish up our action this fall season. Can I have a motion and a second to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Fair Teachers Association?
Somebody.
Okay. We have already discussed this in our presentation, this in our process, so there's no further discussion, I assume. If the secretary please call the board.
Yes, Ms. Bougie. Your practice.
Yes.
I will, yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
Congratulations. We have the memorandum of understanding.
Thank you for your work.
So next, kind of a motion and a second to approve the extension of an empty chapter of five to eight minutes of foreconme. Okay, I have discussed this in the first session, so if further discussion needed, could the secretary please call the board?
Yes, Miss Brown.
Yes.
Miss Bougie. Miss Dowell.
Yes.
I will, yes. Your practice.
Yes. Yes.
With approval, congratulations, Mike. Glad to have you. Next, we approve an extension of the Chief Leadership Directive contract. Can I have a motion and a second?
We'll move. Second.
Okay, discussing, closing session, if any discussion required, can the secretary please call the board?
Yes, Miss Dowell.
Yes.
I will, yes.
Yes.
Miss Louie.
Yes.
Miss Bougie. Miss Brown.
Yes.
And Miss Bougie.
Yes.
Glad to have you too. So now we have a motion and a second to approve the resolution for the presentation, the teachers' time coming in the supplemental saving, supplemental savings. Can I have a second? Not back there. No. Sorry?
Move.
Who moved? Okay.
I'm just, TRS is requiring us now of all school districts to be adopted. Essentially what it's doing is putting another investment option in place for TRS members. It was originally put out there for the school districts to provide any additional investment opportunities, whether it's four oh three or four fifty-seven. We already have all those tournaments in place, so this is more interesting. The required thing we're doing. I've sent the information out to our staff. And this is an option, but we already have these investments opportunities placed outside of this TRS requirement. So this is just a, we're required to do it with TRS. We get more discussion about going forward. This is just a, it goes, it goes in effect in January. It's totally a question for all TRS employees.
Does anybody have any questions about it? Okay, in that case, the secretary please call the board.
Yes, Miss Brown.
Yes.
Miss Dowell.
Yes.
Miss Bougie. Yes. Miss Louie. Miss Dowell.
Yes.
I will, yes. And Miss Bougie.
Yes.
Okay, that is approved. And finally, last but definitely last. Can I have a motion and a second to adopt the resolution?
So move.
A second. Mr. Fair, any further questions?
No, there's the same numbers as last month. Again, we typically protocol is we wait until the second has been filed before the last Tuesday and December. So we give them a season of adjustments and there's no adjustments, no more.
Does anybody have any further questions about? Everyone, the secretary please call the board.
Miss Bougie. Yes. Miss Louie.
Yes.
Miss Dowell.
Yes.
I will, yes.
Yes.
Miss Brown.
Yes.
And then Jay Cockus.
Yes.
And it's approved. Proud of this role. Role board. So next time, is there any other issues that we would like to propose for consideration? I have a couple of things from our board during the meeting. And I think this time, but there's things during our presentation that we may want to bring to the table again. When we're looking at the development plan and when you're talking about the groundbreaking, you know, the opening of the new business. I was wondering if we had proposed maybe like land acknowledgements as we continue to build or we spread out into this land that we all know somebody else was here before, okay? So what do we think about sort of that, I was saying, the land count and as we proceed to build on their these sort of plans, that this land was once, you know, owned by somebody that was, and just, I don't know, that's maybe what you do. How, but I know. I think in a way, in terms of just healing. The ground, you know? So I think, and I also thought of, well, does anybody else have a thought for that? I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
And then the other one was the motion of the Delti is going to create a statement to bring to actual board. But then does that also, do we want a separate board statement? Or does that have a specific exclusive, you know what I'm saying? So just discussion about if the Delti is creating a fairview equity statement and it's adopted by the board, does the board have to make a statement of its own or is it a speak for all?
I think the bold position that we would support that basically is one statement from this district. To support the board. And I'm interested in giving some input in it. That's the reason why it's brought to us. And, and that in the same way, when we decide on a mission statement, you know, our strategic plan, it's everybody, everybody gets involved in it. But it's one, I, I could say it's just one statement. We all feel the same way.
Yeah, I agree.
Yeah, I think that if we have a chance to review it and, you know, and maybe add or whatever, that would be great.
Yeah. If it comes to our staff, if the Delti is generating that support. Yeah. Support is back as teacher's health control. You know? Yeah. And I'll just add, Delti is a more broad-based group of individuals who work here. So we have support staff, we have administrators, we have teachers. Because we feel that, and that's obviously my leadership philosophy is that, you know, we are all together as one team regardless of our role. Um, so all of us are represented in that as well. So I think it would feel really good and starting and adopting something that that group of people comes up with.
And I guess along those same lines, I agree that I was speaking, same thing. I want to make sure that we have kind of discussed how future agenda, whatever that sort of equity statement looks like. And, and I think, I know other, please correct me if I'm wrong. I know there's some policies from other boards surrounding DEI. And I think once we have a chance a little bit and agree on the statement, I think returning back to the matter of discussing our own board policies. And our board policies and support that statement, I think, would be really important again for future agenda.
Nice. Great. Any other thoughts? Okay. Can I have a motion and a second to adjourn the meeting at eight twenty-four? So move. A second, could the secretary please call the board?
Yes, Mr. Blue.
Miss Brown. Miss Jay Cockus.
Yes.
I will, yes. Miss Dowell. Miss Bougie. And Miss Louie.
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you very much, everybody. Appreciate it.